During the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They're available at the entrance. Presented to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. At this time, I will call the order. The City of Grand Terrace, City Council and Successor Agency meeting for June 13th, You would please rise for the invocation given by Dr. Mustafa Kuko of the Islamic Center of Riverside. And then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance led by James Timoney immediately to follow.
Our Lord, as we stand in front of you this afternoon during the second part of the holy month of Ramadan, we pray to you and your askers to pray and to you. And you have promised us your generous promise that you're going to accept from us. So we pray to you to make this beautiful city of Grand Terrace a passion of peace, prosperity, and progress. We pray to you for the well-being and the success of the mayor, the city council, the police departments, and all the departments here and everybody who is working here. And to accept from them their tireless effort to, as they are working hard to serve the residents of this city, accept that from them and put it in their accounts of good deeds. Grant them the energy, the support, and the perseverance to carry on this noble mission as humanly possible. And as we stand in front of you with clean hearts, pure souls, and attentive minds, we pray to you to help the people of Grand Terrace to live in peace and in safety and in happiness. And grant them the education that they deserve and the care that they need and the housing and the food that will allow them to lead a very decent life. Our Lord, we pray to you to shower your blessings on everyone who is here and everyone who is not here and spread peace on us. Amen, amen, amen. Thank you.
Amen.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Will you please join me in placing your right hand over your heart and reciting our pledge? Let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Kuko and Mr. Timoney, and thank you all for being here tonight. I'll start with roll call. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Reynars.
Present.
Councilmember Hesse.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Robles.
Present.
Mayor McNaboe.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
I thank you. We have no special presentations tonight, so we'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by one time at the city council without any discussion, but any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for items to be removed?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove item number three.
Item number three. Any others? All right, I'll entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
I'd like to make a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Reynars, Hesse, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Thank you. Okay, so item three is our master agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and the State of California. Would you like a staff report on that, Ms. Wilson?
Madam Mayor, I just have a question on procedure.
Okay.
I was a little concerned, I went through this particular item, and as you know, I'm not a great fan of money first and then conditions later. And unfortunately, I didn't number it, but there's a fairly healthy amount of yellow on each one of the pages that refers to us as the administrating agency. And we start to talk about things, I mean, there's always a hook somewhere where people hand out money, but we've been awarded $295,000 and then we get mandated conditions. And then we start to look at things about the workup for the preliminary costs, environmental approval, full-time employee in charge of project, and so on. And some of those items may not be specific to our particular project, but I get concerned when we have something after the fact and we basically have no choice but to sign it after the fact. And it would seem to me it would be better if we got these items ahead of time before we consider whether or not we're going to grab a hold of the mousetrap. Anyway, I guess I direct this question to the city manager. Is there anything in this master agreement that looks like it's going to bite us in the tail?
Yes, fully agree with you, definitely the city manager. This line of the verse, it sounds like it's pretty much straightforward with their standard contracts. It does require, actually, it provides us at the end to be able to navigate through the entire process that we should have of these two projects that are grant-ready to be submitted to fund, where this is a planning grant. And so the overall goal is to plan and to be able to end up with a product. So I think it's relatively a standard in terms of how Caltrans operates with these APT grants. I don't believe there's anything that we should be concerned about.
The only other one I was a little concerned about, and maybe we just kind of just check and see if there's a clarification available for the projects that we are doing, because these are boilerplate items. Item number 17, which is packet page number 13, it says, "While consultants can perform sub-" this is second sentence, "Perform supervision inspection where for project with fully qualified and licensed engineer." It says that we, as the administering agency, will provide a full-time employee to be responsible for a responsible charge of each project. So when we're budgeting, we have to have a full-time employee for $295,000. That's going to eat up quite a bit of that money if that's the case.
So what's happening is they request a full-time staff person, which we already have, and our planning director is the one responsible. She's not responsible for, she's responsible for the oversight of the project, not responsible to dedicate her total time to that particular project.
No, that's why I was concerned about it. It didn't read that way. That's why I was concerned.
Okay. It does sound like you need one full-time staff person per project, so that would be two. Any other questions, Mr. Wilson?
Not at this time, thank you, ma'am.
All right, would you like to make a motion on this item? All right. Is there anybody else that would like to move this item, or shall we let it die?
Make a motion to approve the master agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and the State of California, Caltrans.
Second.
Motion passes with councilmembers Reynars, Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNaboe voting yes, councilmember Wilson voting no.
Thank you. All right, we'll move now to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on the irregular agenda for tonight. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not act or discuss an item not on the agenda, but may briefly reply to statements made or ask questions for clarification. Items may also be agendized for a later date or the request to speak during this time. All right, our first request to speak is from Jeffrey McConnell. Please come forward, Mr. McConnell.
From McCall, Walden Avenue, Grand Terrace. I'm here to give you an update on the rezoning of the, from the property owner's perspective, on the rezoning of the 40 acres down along the green zone that we're attempting, that you hired a consultant to do. Back, early June here, early this month, we had a workshop upstairs with Sandra Molina running the workshop. It was an attempt to discuss with the property owners and neighbors with the details of this proposed new agricultural zoning. And there was a couple of property owners that were against it, and the whole meeting just turned into a big waste of time. So I offered, Ms. Molina, that I would get together with two ranch ladies down below, the two other ranches, and we would go over and draft something for her, since that was the number one item on the agenda. I had the agricultural details of Mirko, Riverside, Redlands, and of course, Grand Terrace, and together we drafted a proposal, a set of details, and then I got over a dozen property owners, immediate neighbors down there to sign that proposal. And I turned that into Sandra Molina. Now, even though at the meeting's end I said that the council didn't allow rezon the whole 40 acres, I went and got a petition that, it says, a petition to rezon 40 acres from M2 back to Ag 1, and we're going to request that rezon the entire area down there for future green space. And I don't have time to read it, so for the rest of the people in the room. City council is reviewing neighborhood requests and is concerned to rezon approximately 40 acres back to agricultural style environment where the various property owners can farm agricultural products, and they'll raise animals for the general public to come and buy and enjoy. A piece of Grand Terrace like it used to be, a green zone, a green belt, a destination place for the family to come and enjoy. Possible examples, organic farms, such as I'm trying to attempt to do, horse boarding, riding along the San Antonio River Trail, Fresh Farm Eggs, Pumpkin Patch, Christmas Tree Farm, Fresh Cut Flowers, Petting Zoo, Garden Nursery, Fruit Stand, Strawberry Patch, Country Fair, et cetera. So I said that I would hand this over to the city council. It's got 198 signatures here, and along with their emails and phone numbers, so I'd like to turn this into the council. And since we hired a consultant, I was wondering how long this would take to complete this process.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Will you hand that to the city clerk, please? And I think that staff will follow up with you on how long that will take. Is there anybody else that would like to speak during this time? Anne Wade Hornsby, please come forward.
Hi, I live at 22594 Eaton Drive in Grand Terrace. I'm just going to follow up on something Jeffrey McConnell was just talking about. He did not present to you, but I had them, I thought they might be here, pictures of his property compared to the properties around him, which are not green spaces right now. They're dried, weed-covered, waiting-for-a-fire-type-of areas. And the reason that I'm concerned about it is I keep my horses at one of the ranches right nearby, in fact, his neighbor. The problem that I'm, what I'm wondering every time that I go to the ranch and see his very well-cared-for piece of property and compared to the mess that's been around that area as long as I've lived here. I've lived in Grand Terrace since 2000, but I was in High Grove on Michigan Street and rode there in '68 on, so it's been a long time. And the place hasn't changed at all, except for what Jeffrey has done to it. And I'm wondering if, I know that there's a lot that has to be gone through in terms of the fact that it was, first it was agricultural, then there was an agricultural overlay, which brought the flood plain into the picture, and there's a lot of things that evidently hoops that you have to go through to be able to plant on your own property and do anything that you would like to do with property that you own. And I was just wondering, I mean, I actually watch Congress today on TV, if perhaps you are allowed to do administrative or executive decisions instead of having to go through all those hoops. I honestly was just wondering that, because it might be something worth thinking about. The place looks really good, there's a lot he could do with it, and a lot that would benefit Grand Terrace, including the possibility of even a farmer's market, whatever. It would be nicer than looking at weeds that just get higher and higher and burn really well when they get lighted up, which they did last week, you know, and often do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hornsby. I'll have a staff member follow up with you to answer your questions about the process. Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak during this time? All right, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for their communications. We'll start with councilmember Brian Reynars.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in December, the Colton Joint Unified School District initiated a facilities master plan process. The purpose of this was to identify long-term demographic trends, assess current facilities, conditions, and envision educational program opportunities in order to develop strategies that address these needs and their impact to facilities in a comprehensive and thoughtful manner. The goal was to align the facilities master plan with and to support the strategic priorities. So basically, what they were trying to do when they started this at the end of last year was to look ahead facilities-wise, to see what the district wanted, what the public wanted for the district, what the teachers wanted, what the students wanted, what the staffs wanted. So they held a series of meetings. We met in January, February, March, April, and then again, just recently, to wrap it up. They took surveys of the students, surveys of the teachers, and they just wanted to get an idea to present to the Board of Education how best to spend the money that they intend to have over the next 10 years. And on May 25th, I attended the final meeting, and they had an absolute packed house. And I'm not sure what they did to get that many people in there, because all the other meetings were pretty empty, but this one was a packed gymnasium, and there were several teachers and community members representing all of their individual school sites. We viewed and discussed the results of surveys, including the school site committee priorities. We looked at total program cost. We looked at the available money to address priorities. Basically, how much will all this cost, and how much money do we have? And finally, we voted. They actually had big posters all around the room for each individual school site, and we each were given 84 votes, which seemed like a lot, but I guess they wanted to fill them up. There's a lot of schools in that district. And we got to go to each school site, and we were encouraged not just to go to our own school, but to assess it district-wide, to see what the priority should be for spending. And we got to put our own little stickers on each need at each school site, and there were some interesting results, which I'll share with you here in a minute. So the priority list on each school site poster was a result of all the meetings and surveys that had already been completed previously. That's how they actually came up with the list that we got to vote on. So what does it all mean for Grand Terrace schools? The superintendent did ask us to consider district-wide needs, and I did that as best I could while also trying to remember who I represent and why I was there. Some schools in the district were built in the 1930s and in desperate need of repair and upgrade, while Grand Terrace is basically a brand-new facility. So the results of this whole thing, as expected, the high school up here placed very low on everybody's priority list for maintenance and facility upgrades. The only area of note was massive support for security and safety upgrades. And the reason for that is that this category included drop-off, pickup, and parking. That's a problem district-wide, but specifically at our schools here in Grand Terrace. The cost to fix all identified Grand Terrace issues in this category is $554,000. And then the process did reveal, like I said, that this is an issue district-wide. Grand Terrace Elementary obviously needs much more attention in a multitude of areas, getting many votes in areas of modernization of classrooms, new construction of classrooms, site utilities, food service improvements, staff support improvements, safety, security. If all of the identified improvements to that school were completed, the cost is estimated at $37,461,000, just for Grand Terrace Elementary. The priority needs of Terrace View Elementary were identified as new classroom construction and safety and security. And again, remember that this category includes drop-off and pickup. The total cost, if everything that everybody wants done to Terrace View, is roughly $23 million. The needs of Terrace Hill Middle School were very similar to those of Terrace View Elementary, so basically, drop-off, pickup, and they need new classrooms. And basically, new construction and safety and security far outpaced all other identified needs for that school site at an estimated cost of $21 million. I asked the consultant, the district had hired a consulting firm to help them through this process, why he thought that the drop-off and pickup process was so shoddy and ill-thought-through. His answer was that what I hadn't thought of was that most of the schools were built in the 1930s through the 1970s, when one populations were much smaller, busing was commonplace, and a lot of kids walked to school. This whole phenomenon of one parent, one child, and just lines and lines of cars is relatively new to Grand Terrace, so now it's an issue that they have to pretty much address district-wide. The entire district wish list cost, they just took the combined cost of everything that everybody wanted done, because that was the first meeting, we just dreamed, we just put everything out there that we wanted done. It was estimated to be $1.2 billion, while the estimated available funding for facilities over the next 10 years is estimated to be just over $193 million. So you can see that we're kind of short there. The consultant indicated, though, that this is roughly in line with what is seen in school districts around the state. And of that $193 million, approximately 33% will need to be held back for costs such as land acquisition, utility fees, off-site work, traffic signals, hazmat abatement, things like that. And that leaves our budget at approximately $129 million for facilities, so roughly 10%. So basically, we can get about 10% of what we want, we can actually get that done over the next 10 years, unless the school district wants to go back to voters to try to get more bond money. What that $129 million is, is basically what's available if nothing changes. So basically, 10%, and the consultant also told me in a conversation, in his 30 years, he's only seen one school district ever able to fully fund the wish list, and that's in Marin County, north of San Francisco, where they have plenty of money. They came back with a price tag of a couple billion, and they said, okay, do it. And they got to fix everything. And the other end of the spectrum is the Central Valley, where the districts are told don't even bother with the master plan. You just basically do what you can to keep the lights on and keep textbooks. So then I was curious, well, why this disparity in funding? And he explained to me that a large portion of school funding in California comes from voter-approved issuance of bonds. The bondability limit for any school district is set by state law at 15% of the assessed value of the entire district. So they assess the value of the land, the buildings, for the entire district, then you're allowed to go to the voters and ask for 15% of that. Well, if you're in an area where land is really inexpensive, you have no bondability. You can't get enough money. If you're in Marin County, you can get billions. So in a way, that doesn't seem fair, that if your child goes to school in a poorer area, you get less money for your schools. But he said that's the way it works. So our 10%, he said, is pretty good. It's in line with everything. So the takeaways that I got from this whole process, in many of the meetings, Councilman Hesse was with me, and the city manager Duffy was with me too sometimes, and these are recommendations. And these recommendations will be used by the board to decide how to spend their money over the next 10 years. They're obviously not binding. They can change things, they can choose what they want to do with that money, but they wanted some feedback from people involved in the system and the stakeholders, so they could have a guide on what people are thinking and what they want the money spent on. And based on our assessed value, we have plenty of bondability still remaining in our district, so the district could still go back to the voters to try to get more money. And if people feel like some of these lower priority items are things that they want done... And if people feel like some of these lower priority items are things that they want done, they can vote as such, and if they don't feel that, they can also vote as such. New technology and 21st century classrooms were common threads throughout the process. But when it really got down to it, updated and new buildings and safety and security were seen as major, immediate priorities district-wide. And it almost seemed at times to me like the consultant was pushing 21st century classrooms. Lot of beautiful powerpoints of engaged students working on iPads in vast open spaces, sitting on comfortable couches under soaring glass ceilings. But in the end, I was glad to see that overwhelmingly, teachers, staff, and community members saw that before we can get to that point, we need to meet the basic needs of the district because there are limited funds, as you've seen. Students need well-built classrooms, they need to be clean, and they need to be safe. The rest can come later, and I think that was identified on the district-wide wish lists. I also attended the memorial, the memorial ceremony at Veterans Freedom Park. And I didn't mention that at our last meeting because I wasn't aware that we were going to have council comments. But those ceremonies always get to me. I come from a military family and I was in the military. So that was a beautiful one, as far as these ceremonies go. So I appreciated that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Council member Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who are coming out tonight. Really want to thank the staff, the volunteers, who made Grand Terrace Day possible this last weekend, or the weekend before. It's really nice events, nice to see people out there, and I really appreciate all the hard work all the volunteers do for this city. And one thing about Colton Joint Unified School District on the bonds, if you guys really want to get involved, that's how I got involved, is they have a bond oversight committee. And you could get on Colton Joint Unified School District website and you could sign up. It's a really good way for you to control the dollars that are getting spent in the school. It's a check and balance for the citizens and it holds everybody accountable. And Father's Day is coming up, so I want to wish everybody a happy Father's Day. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor. God bless.
Thank you, council member. Council member Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just three items. I'd like to thank the mayor for the opportunity to attend the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District Meeting on the 8th of June. There was no public testimony, but they did approve the 9th of March minutes. This is a quarterly meeting. And it has to do with every drop of water that we consume. And one question that I asked was, I know that there are a lot of discussion, at least in the Orange County area, so far as purple pipe, which means recycled water. And recycled water is probably the best way. I know of a couple of consultants that don't believe in any water being classified as recycled if it hasn't been stepped on at least four times, which I think is a pretty good way of doing things. But as we listen to this, they gave us a beautiful brochure that encapsulated about a three-foot stack of legal that they have to produce each year to satisfy the watermaster and the courts, really, more than anything else, in relation to the adjudication that took place a long time ago in relation to the water areas. This, I'll have it here on the desk, and if you want, you'd be glad to page through it. One thing that we learned really well is the reason why they don't have purple pipe and the reason why they don't really spend a lot of time on trying to get recycled water in the series is we've got a lot of water. And though we have to go for it, I can tell you that at this point, we're in a ninth, this is the 19th year of the drought, as far as the water district is concerned. Back in the, right after the 40s or 30s and 40s, I don't, you know, there's only a few of you probably remember this, but anyway, back sometime in the 20s, Orange County actually flooded because we didn't have a lot of facilities for the Santa Ana River Basin and so on. But in the 30s and 40s, and a little bit after that, all the way into the 60s, we had a 20-year drought then. So this is not the first time that we've been in this rodeo. The physical solution is this magazine that they put out for all us guys and gals that want to really understand the ins and outs of water. And the geography of the area basically produces a lot of water that comes out of mountains and then goes through the sediments and goes into the basin. And so every year, the water district is responsible for making sure that they don't have to do a recharge to the water basin to be able to keep up with the demand. And that demand includes about 72% of the area of San Bernardino and 28% of Riverside, but it also includes a substantial chunk of Orange County as well. The Seven Oaks Dam, of course, was a big help to us and through it, we received 43,000 acre-feet of water, which is no small amount. An acre foot, that's 43,680 square feet with one foot deep. The important part and everything I took away from this particular meeting is is that we are safe with our water supply at this juncture, but that doesn't mean that we get to run around and spend it like maniacs because there's always another, you know, substantial drought coming around the corner. At this point, as far as the water district is concerned, we still have reason to be very conservative. So I will leave this up here, and I understand that we can get as many of these as we would like to pass around to the public. It is in layman's terms, and it's a whole lot better than arena three-foot stack of paperwork. Anyway, the area that we drain is 2,500 square miles in our water basin. So that gives you an idea of exactly what we're dealing with in the San Bernardino area. Anyway, I appreciated that, being able to go to that meeting. Also, I'd like to wish everybody a Father's Day. And last item, I know you know that Santa Claus Incorporated is a good operation. There's a patriotic quilt opportunity drawing, a dollar per ticket and $5 for six tickets. I'm going to remand this to the city manager, and he can place it however it might be appropriate. There is a picture of the quilt, and the drawing date is July 5th, 2017. The photograph, which I could probably hold up, but doesn't show it real well, it's a very patriotic quilt, red, white, and blue. And I happen to know the person who put it together, and I know it's quality work. So anyway, if you feel so inclined, just hang on to the stub or get the stub back to the person that collects it, and it'll put it in the drawing, and then July 5th, 2017. They're supposed to draw on this benefit quilt. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Mayor Protem, real bliss.
Yes, thank you. On May 30th, I had the opportunity to sit with staff, and Omotrans staff. Every so many years, they visit cities to talk about the short-range transit plan and some other longer-range planning items. It was a very interesting meeting, and I didn't expect that. Also, I think the community days I had, by the time I learned of the dates of community days, I already had a commitment elsewhere. But Omotrans has some programs. One is with Lyft, and it's for seniors and the disabled. If you put up $40, Omotrans puts $40 into Lyft and you use an app, and you can use that to get around to appointments or shopping that you need. Also, there's a transportation reimbursement for those who rely on friends and neighbors quite frequently for transportation and feel quite badly about using someone else's gas and resources. And that person can qualify for reimbursement to Omotrans. And staff has that, and I hope we get to get it on the website. We also discussed, just among any things, but one that's of note is about the routing of the bus so that it serves our high school students better. And so those are the things that will be coming through the pipeline. On June 7th, I attended the Omotrans monthly board meeting. Other than, you know, doing RFPs for gas and oil services, boring stuff like that, the thing of significance that we did was Omotrans will be moving to mobile payment. So it will be an app, and you won't have to worry about if you have $5 and the fare is $1, you'll just be able to use that app and go on the bus. Also, at that meeting, the Southern California Associated Governments had a report. They did a special study on all the transportation modes to Ontario Airport. And I asked if that was possible, to have a report that SCAG does that would look at our regional needs in Grand Terrace. And they said they would, it'd be something that I said I would share with the mayor, but it would come through SBCTA. Also, I attended AMANA Housing and Economic Development League of Cities Policy Committee. Tended that in Sacramento. One of the significant things was we had a presentation from the California Department of Housing. They have some programs I'm also going to leave with staff, some zero-down programs, and basically the 3% down payment for first-time buyers, which is put in a subordinate loan. And so they're looking at a lot of creative ways to get people into housing. There was a report on the legislature. They were there finishing up on the budget. And the folks in California are accustomed to huge amounts of money being placed for affordable housing, and that isn't going to happen. So they're looking to partner with cities. They're going to go out on housing bonds, and then we're going to get those out to people in our sphere. One of the things that we acted on as a council was to have a consultant on enhanced infrastructure financing districts. And we had a presentation from West Sacramento because they are rolling out the very first enhanced infrastructure financing district. So that was interesting to know. The second day, since I was still in town, I attended the policy committee that our city manager's on, and he, I'm sure, will provide some information on that. But it was about pension reform. So it's getting pretty serious now, that discussion. It was quite interesting, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I will thank the volunteers and staff members for our community day that took place a couple of weekends ago. That was a lot of effort, like the pancake breakfast at the fire department the same day, and the Lions who gave movies in the park that night. I did attend on June 6th, the SBCTA, SBCOG board meeting. A lot of it was end-of-year items, end-of-fiscal-year items. We had a closed session with our legal counsel, updates on existing litigation, 15 cases at this point, seven cases of anticipated litigation. And then we had a public employee performance evaluation for the executive director. The remainder of the open session meetings were approval of memorandums of understanding, amendments on projects. We elected new officers for fiscal year 1718. So congratulations to Ontario council member Alan Wapner and San Bernardino County Supervisor, our own James Ramos. We conducted public hearings to consider condemnation of real property required for the U.S. 395 expansion. So if any of you drive through Adelanto and Victorville, you'll be happy to know that they are finally getting ready to widen the 395. I had a request to adjourn our meeting in the honor of Detective Jack Morenberg. Jack Morenberg was a detective with the Colton Police Department Honor Guard, U.S. Navy Honor Guard. He was a member of the Colton Police Department for many years, and he retired from the U.S. Army Reserves, as well as the U.S. Navy, and the U.S. Navy as a Vietnam vet. It stated that public service was his life. He called Grand Terrace his home. His friends paid to have his name put on our Veterans Wall of Freedom, and it did go up on Memorial Day this year. Unfortunately, Detective Morenberg did not make it to see that day. There will be a memorial service for him, and it's scheduled on June 15th at 2:00 p.m. at Colton First Assembly of God Church. And then a military salute at Veterans Freedom Park here in Grand Terrace that will involve the Military Honor Guard, the Colton PD Honor Guard, and Colton Fire Honor Guard. The patriotic guard will be leading the procession from the church to the park. So that will be happening that day. For those of you that will wonder what's going on, or for those of you that want to go and pay your respects, it will be a very nice ceremony in the honor of this man that served our country as well as kept our neighboring city safe. So I will end by saying happy Father's Day in advance to all of you fathers out there, and we'll move on with our agenda for today. We do not have any public meetings today, or any public hearings, sorry. No unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business, the first of which, item seven on your agenda, Ward of June 2017 Community Benefits Fund. May we have a staff report, please?
Governor, Mayor Protem, City Council. Before you is a staff report regarding applications received by the city for the Community Benefit Fund. The staff report supports the following city council goals: To ensure our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements. And develop and implement successful partnerships through productive collaboration with community groups, youth programs, and senior organizations. The staff report before you lists two applications that we received for grants from the Community Benefits Fund. We received one from the Drug Alternative Program and the Friends of the Grand Terrace Library. The Drug Alternative Program is a program that's been in the city for a few years, and they're an organization that provides a supportive residential environment in which men addicted to drugs can experience healing. Part of that work therapy program is lawn and landscaping work. Most of the clientele serviced are commercial customers, one of the large ones being Loma del University. So as a form of therapy, again, lawnmower services is offered. The application is requesting that they help pay for the cost of a new lawnmower that services their clients. The Ms. Freddie Harris from the Drug Alternative Program is here. Should the council want to ask her any questions? The second application is from the Friends of the Grand Terrace Branch Library. As you know, the Friends of the Library support the Grand Terrace Branch and its programs and activities through the holding fundraising events such as book sales and sponsoring staffing library events. This is the Friends' third request, as shown on the application. Last year, what they submitted for was that summer reading program, which was a huge success. So they're submitting again this for the summer reading program in the summer of 2017. That concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Fortune. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Council member Hesse.
Yes, we had a lot of, if we could get that program person up here to explain exactly what that program is, so people can hear it on, residents can hear about the program. A bit more detail.
Welcome, Mrs. Freddie Harris.
I'm Freddie Harris from Drug Alternative Program, and this is our 30th year in Grand Terrace. We have a 12- to 18-month residential program for men addicted to drugs. And the program is not just teaching them to get off drugs. We have a work therapy program for them. And our program is set up like everyday living. These guys get up early in the morning, they have their breakfast, they have their worship, and they work in the lawn business from like 6:00 to 2:00 o'clock. Then they come home, they have their dinner. Then we have therapy sessions in the evening. They have one-on-one therapy, group therapy, and we teach them about everyday living. And our success rate is 60% to 80%. And that's because we are a faith-based organization, and all of our customers are commercial customers. And we have activities for the guys, and we teach them, you know, how to live. And after they graduate, we have a transition home. They can come and live there for up to a year, or if they need more, to work or go to school in order to get back into society.
go to school in order to get back into society as regular citizens. So that's what Drug Alternative, and we used to do, the park here at the city of Grand Terrace, we had, uh, a program, we, we beautified the, uh, thoroughfare here, and we'd gotten an award from the city of Grand Terrace for helping to beautify. We also got an award for having beautiful Christmas decorations, so we've been a real part of the city of Grand Terrace, and we love Grand Terrace.
Any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Harris. Did you have questions?
And I wanted to think, thank Bill Hussey for telling us about this benefit program to help us in our program.
You're welcome, ma'am. Can you, uh, tell, uh, explain to the residents how to get ahold of you if they want to ask for help for?
Okay. We do have a website of drugalternativer.org, and our email address is D A P C A L I F at AOL dot com. Our telephone number is nine zero nine, seven eight three, one zero nine four. And we have four homes in a two-block area. We have one home on Arless Drive, one on Kingston, and two on Arless Lane. So you are welcome anytime to come and visit our homes, their homes, just like, you know, all these homes here, and we welcome you to come and visit our facilities.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff at this time? Thank you, Mrs. Harris. All right. Seeing no questions of staff, I will open it to public comment. Is there anybody that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no takers, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
And we would like to make a motion to approve the award of two thousand dollars of the City Community Benefit Fund, Benefit Fund to the Drug Alternative Program to help offset the cost of lawnmower purchase for the DAP therapy program, and also approve the award of two thousand dollars from the City Community Benefit Funds to the Friends of the, of the Grand Terrace Library to help cover the cost of the Grand Terrace Branch Library two thousand and seventeen summer reading program. Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with council members Ryan Aris, Hussey, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Proton, Worldless voting yes, Mayor McInnes voting yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to item eight, which is consideration of award for contractor agreement for the construction of Grand Terrace Dog Park to clean-cut landscape. May we have staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, uh, to the city manager, uh, probably which department I was with did this presentation. This is a dog park project award. So a little bit of background, the Dog Park Project, the city of Grand Terrace has planned for a dog park for more than a decade, uh, for the participation of citizens who, uh, have had yard sales and wooded sales and all kinds of activities to try to keep the dream alive of having a dog park in the city of Grand Terrace. In September two thousand and fifteen, the city authorized an agreement with MIG to assess the existing parks and design for new parks. Uh, by November two thousand and sixteen, the dog park concept was approved and the final design was commissioned. It was approved because of the volunteers, the, the citizen volunteers, and the council's efforts to hire a professional architectural design, uh, company to assist in the development of the process. So part of the process included holding community meetings and outreach to, to get input on what the dog park would necessarily need to have to meet, to meet the needs of the citizens of Grand Terrace. This is kind of a picture of the dog park area that was actually redevelopment agency land owned, and then also in the city's, uh, London's property management plan, the council identified this as a site for the, uh, future dog park site. So I give you an area here of the, uh, the dog park site. Also, the community groups raised money for the dog park, uh, and the city dedicated the area redevelopment land for the project. One of the concepts that we're looking at, I will bring this back to the council, uh, in the next couple of months, perhaps the next month or so, is that we are also looking for the dog park to have a, more impact to the city's general fund. So the project is funded by park impact fees that are paid for by developers, so the city can continue on with a certain average number of, uh, open space and parkland. The one thing we want to do is we want to, we want to come back to the council, establish an endowment that anyone can donate to that endowment for park maintenance for a particular park. So in this particular case, we would have, the dog park would have an endowment that, that a resident could, um, donate money to, a company could donate money to, people could leave property to, to, to ensure that, that, uh, if, I hope that they never comes, that the city ever, or the separate country has another economic crisis, that we don't have to look at, you know, reducing levels of service through, through the park systems. So id- ideally, we'll be back to the council in the next thirty to sixty days with a, a proposal to set up an endowment for the dog park program. So after all of the work the community members did in the MIG, we came up with a design. The design really inclusive of, it's, has, for large dogs and small dogs. But, you know, as I showed you earlier in the pictures, part of this is going to be beautiful views, looking out at the dog park. And so the design, actually, during the discussion that we had, we wanted to make sure that small dog owners, who would have this area here, and large dog owners that are here, would not be cheated out of the views. And so the area is, um, grassy area for small dogs and long, large dogs. There's an entryway gate here where you bring your dog in, and there's another gate here to get them for the small dogs and then for the large dogs. Uh, we really did this concept, we did not include the sidewalk and the curb and gutter here, so we actually went through and included that in, in the final design, and that's what the, the project was bid at, include that. So MIG was the consultant use approval for the design, plan, specs, and estimates. The project was advertised and bids were opened on June fifth, two thousand and seventeen. So we, we had several bids. We had a bid for, bid A was four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, bid B was four seventy-three, uh, bid C, three seventy-three, uh, bid D was four ninety-seven, and then bid E was four ninety-six. Part of the process also besides the bid is to be responsive bidder, and we're happy to say that bid C was actually a responsive bid at three hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And bid C actually was Clean Cut Landscape Inc., and we have with us today Richard Allen from the company, and he's available for, for any comments. So the funding for this program, the, so the appropriations for the dog park will be, will be addressed in the two thousand and seventeen eighteen budget, and we may have an opportunity to use additional park impact fees and thereby reduce the use of bond proceeds. So in this process we have, we've got multiple funding sources, uh, that we were requesting the council approve tonight for the contract. So the, the, the items that we put together included for the park impact fees of three hundred and ten thousand dollars, measure I is forty thousand dollars for the curb and sidewalk improvements, and then redevelopment bond proceeds. The city has two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in redevelopment bond proceeds that we would request that, that we would be able to use for this, this project. Uh, but what we'll be able to do is we're also expecting to get additional park impact fees. And so during that time of, of the final budget, we'll be able to, those funds will come in, we will not have to be able to use those, those bond, those, those bond proceeds. But we'll have that discussion, uh, actually coming up, uh, in, in the next week regarding, uh, the, the, the overall budget. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Did this project, or this, this park plan have to go to the planning commission for
Madam Mayor, I had this discussion with our city attorney, and, and the answer was no, does not have to.
Okay. What are we doing for parking? It didn't look like there was a whole lot of parking for this.
Um, Madam Mayor, Alan French, Public Works Director. Yes, uh, not knowing the amount of cars that would be out there, what we did was we were providing, uh, parallel parking along the street. There's spaces along the curb and gutter that will be allowed, uh, for parking, as well as, uh, as Mr. Duffy said, uh, City Manager Duffy said, uh, there's going to be one handicap space. That is, uh, it's actually pretty comparable to what the fitness park parking is at this time, and we just wanted to make sure that there were some spaces out there for the owners to park safely. Um, that's not to say that in the future, as that curb and gutter extends, there will be additional spaces there. Right now, there is off-street parking, uh, continuing to the south all the way down the street. So there, there is provisions there, and as the roads improve, the parking will continually approve along that line.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Just a few questions, uh, clarifications, really. As you know, uh, as the city manager knows, this is kind of an experiment on our part because it was a, the idea was, since it was a dog park, rather than spend a lot of money in, in design, we kind of went towards a design build. And so my question is, did we get any benef, measurable benefit out of that circumstance? Can we determine we saved ourselves thirty or forty grand?
Uh, from, from a consultation with MIG, uh, they seemed to bind to the concept and believe that, that we were. Uh, and, um, so, but Alan wants to comment on that, concern me.
So I, I would just say that on the design side, it was, uh, there was cost savings because that was all done ahead of time, but it was done ahead of time. And now that we're awarding the contract, um, you know, that's the standard construction bid award is what we did.
Can you, uh, can you tell me what the, because I didn't find it in the, in the agenda, uh, the architect's cost estimate for this particular park?
Yes, that wasn't included, just the, uh, the bid, the winning bid was included.
Yes.
But the architect's, uh, estimate was less than, uh, the bid.
Okay.
About, uh, three twenty.
Oh, okay, so we're close because of the sidewalk stuff.
There was additional.
And then, um, I'm a little concerned, and so maybe you can make me feel better. A hundred thousand dollars is a lot of savings, which I greatly appreciate that. It's been my experience that, you know, money doesn't grow on trees, or there are no such things as magic money. So, um, uh, what did, what, your process that you went through to vet this?
Uh, we did, uh, check on the references for the contractor and had positive results. Uh, they had, uh, recently done a dog park out in, uh, the desert area, uh, for one of the desert cities, and they were happy with the contractor. Um, so we checked references. We also, uh, talked to the contractor as well, and, uh...
And he's comfortable.
They are here, if you, uh, wish to speak to them, but they didn't come back with any negative feedback after providing their bid as well as the second and third bid.
No reason to interrogate him. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's a wonderful thing, and he probably has some great secrets up his sleeve, which is terrific. We're getting to take advantage of some of that. Last question I have is, uh, if we were to do this again, uh, would it be worthwhile for us to try to broaden out our bid list a little bit? Because we've got several other parks, and it would seem to me that we've got some medium-sized folks giving us, I know this, these, this outfit's from Clovis, uh, but it seems to me there's a lot more peoples out there. Uh, you know, especially if we were to set our own specs, which I didn't see us a real definite set of specs on this, other than saying four-inch something rather.
Um, the specs, a lot of the times, we, we try to minimize what we require and defer to the green book, uh, and hopefully get more bidders. There were some, uh, other bidders that didn't make the cutoff time.
Okay.
So we would have had, uh, six or seven more, uh, six or seven total instead of the five.
Great.
But we, the, the bidder, um, or the plan holder list was up to almost twenty. So we were kind of surprised that we didn't get as many bids, but, but we were happy with the five, and we would have had seven had the time not constrained, not...
All right, well, congratulations. Way we go. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Councilmember Hussey?
As for the city manager, I know you, you talked about, um, donations, so to maintain the park, but what do you think the estimate costs of maintaining that park, uh, monthly?
I think generally it was about three thousand dollars, based upon our current contract, that we have an easy sunny day. And that's, and that's, uh, you know, that's basically taking our total number that we have now and looking at the annual amount and dividing it by the parks, that's about, about three thousand for the year.
Three thousand a year? All right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing none, I will open it up to public comment. Thank you. A request to speak from Mike Ald.
Hi, council members, mayor, staff. Interestingly, tonight, um, we talked about a lot of things that happened here in town. Uh, Freedom Wall, um, Community Days, there's a Halloween haunt coming, um, Dog Park. Hopefully, everybody knows that all of those are committees of the foundation of Grand Terrace, so I just want to give a shout out to the foundation of Grand Terrace, who pretty much has been responsible for Community Days for years. Um, I'm here to talk about the Dog Park. It's been a long time. We've, uh, my wife and I are members of the foundation of Grand Terrace and, uh, co-chair persons of the Dog Park Committee. We have worked diligently for many years to, uh, increase interest, raise funds, um, sell cookies. Uh, and, and we are very, very excited to hopefully see the, uh, the culmination of, of the Dog Park being built, and I am here to urge, uh, council to vote in favor of this, um, especially since the funding is not going to be affecting the general fund. Um, also, I, I can't speak for the foundation of Grand Terrace, but it will certainly be my recommendation that the twelve or so thousand dollars that we have raised, we'd have never gotten to this number, um, that that money be, um, put into the endowment for the maintenance of the park, because every single penny of that money has been, um, earmarked only for the Dog Park. So three thousand dollars a year, so four thou, four years' worth of maintenance, um, right out of the gate. And we will, uh, continue to try to support every effort to, um, fill this, uh, the endowment fund so that we can continue to maintain the park. I, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alden. Thank you for all of your, your work and...
Thank you.
Thank you to Beverly and, and the rest of the Dog Park Committee members.
Thanks for roping me into this, Darcy.
Uh-huh. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at this time? Oh, please, uh, come forward and state your name.
Uh, good evening. Hello, council members. My name is Dan Paul Senior. Um, first of all, I just want to let you know that I'm really grateful for Bev and Mike. They got us on the committee, I would say, about four or five years ago, and we've been working side by side with them every time they have an activity to raise funds. But what cracked me up was the fact that, uh, I was so proud of our twelve thousand dollars that we had in, I said, no time we'll have that park built. Well, who in the heck was going to know it's going to cost three hundred and some thousand dollars to build a park? We would have never done it ourselves, but thanks to the efforts of the city and, uh, Mr. Hussey, we were able to come up, I guess, with the funds. But, uh, I'm just wondering if we can come up with some ideas. I was possibly like the benches and stuff. I see that around Grand Terrace, they have benches and they have plaques on them, that maybe we could do that, uh, get people to buy the bench and we have the name plaque put on it, because I, I was thinking about possibly doing something like that for my parents, uh, donating the bench and then have the plaque put on it, or you guys, somewhere we can work it out where people can, or somebody can donate the fountain or put their name on it, or... on it, or some, so I don't know how we would work out the details to do that, maybe at that other meeting they're talking about, talking about how to do things. But I think that'd be an idea, if we can get people to donate or pay extra money to have their plaques put on benches, or whatever. But this is a long time coming on this dog park. I'm sure people have seen my posting of Toby Dog. He's been looking forward to it. I'm glad we decided to do it soon, because he is thirteen years old. I don't know how much longer he's going to be with us, but I'm sure he's grateful for, going to have this park. So, I'm hoping and recommending that you please say okay on this. This is the very good for the city of Grand Terrace, good for people and their pets. I know a lot of the pets are like family, and I think they deserve to have their own little park, to be able to get out there and do their thing. But again, I want to thank Bev and Mike for all their hard work, and hopefully you guys will authorize this, and we can move on and get our park for our doggies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores, and thank you for your time and effort in this as well. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at this time? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to motion approval, award of the attached contractor agreement for the construction of Grand Terrace Dog Park to clean-cut landscape in the amount of three hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifteen cents, and authorize the city manager to execute the contractor agreement and any specific change orders.
Okay.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Reinars, Hussain, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Okay, thank you, and thank you again, Dog Park Committee members, for your efforts, and thank you to all the residents of Grand Terrace who supported this. All right, we will move to item nine, which is a license agreement between Colton Joint Unified School District and the city of Grand Terrace for recreational use of school district facilities.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be presenting this item also. As indicated, this is a license agreement between Colton Joint Unified School District and the city of Grand Terrace for two particular recreational activities. One is for soccer at Grant, at Terrace Hills Middle School. Colton Joint Unified School District and the city will be, Colton Joint Unified School District will be renovating the existing soccer field. And so, ideally, we want a soccer field that looks something like this. Currently, we have a soccer field that looks like this, and it's what the kids played on last year. We have benefited from the rain, so we're looking at a different field right now, but one of the things is that the school districts are well aware of, they need to do a major rehab of the facility, of the field, which includes regrading and receding, and then getting enough time to allow for the seed to take. So, what we'll be doing in our agreement is twofold. Colton will be, Colton Joint Unified School will be doing the rehab, and the agreement calls for the city to be able to use the field during non-school hours. Now, obviously, we don't have a recreation program, we rely heavily on our youth leagues. And so, how the agreement works is, the city signs an agreement with the school district, then the city works with the youth leagues for access to the field. And in this particular case, what our overall plan will be, and I'll think I'll just kind of move forward with this. The school district will utilize the field for Terrace Hills Middle School. The estimated cost will be a couple hundred thousand dollars. The city will be responsible for, to coordinate any after-school activities on the field. The city will enter into an agreement with youth soccer for access to the field. Any additional requests beyond the normal maintenance will be borne by the city and captured through by youth soccer leagues. So, basically, what we're saying is, the city, the school district maintains the soccer field to a certain level, just for regular school play. If the league would like to have it meet, say, AYSO standards, then we would, the city will go out and we'll find a private contractor, and we will get quotes and bids, and we will sit down with the school district and to figure out what, to determine what that base level should be, and then based on that cost, the school, the youth league would then sit down and they would reimburse us for any cost incurred above the normal maintenance that the school district would incur. So, this agreement is also scheduled to be approved by the Colton Joint Unified School District on June fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen. The second part to this is Terrace Hills Middle School. Last year, we had a very successful summer swim program at the Grand Terrace High School. Our, we are going to be entering to a license agreement with the Colton Joint Unified School District to refurbish and utilize the Terrace Hills Middle School. I think most of the residents who have lived here for a while can remember that that middle school pool used to be very active in terms of people learning how to swim and the local swim club. And so, one of, our goal is to kind of refurbish that pool and have it become an active part of the community again. The city will have access to the pool during non-school hours. The city may use third-party to operate a summer or after-school program. The agreement is for a ten-year period. So, the city agreement with, our school district, to use soccer fields and the swimming pool at Terrace Hills Middle School, also increases the, this, so we'll be getting this increased maintenance result and additional expenses, but the cost for us to utilize the soccer field is one dollar a year. For the pool, we are entering to a license agreement for a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. For a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars is actually park impact fees, which, once again, helps promote recreational activities within the city. So, we're paying that one-time cost of a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, and the school district will do the regular maintenance, and if we want to do any summer swim programs, we would then contract with a third-party like the YMC, like we did the previous year. This agreement is for ten years, as I said earlier. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Who will be responsible for the maintenance of the pool?
The school district will be responsible for the maintenance of the pool. If we are going to do anything, well, if we have a third-party come in, they're responsible for, you know, cleaning up the facility, but in terms of the maintenance of the pool, the school district will be responsible for that.
Any questions of staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion. Mr. City Attorney?
The recommendation that you have before you, should someone make a motion to that effect? I have some, a couple of revisions that I'd like to propose. The first revision would be to the recommendation number one. It says, "Approve license agreement," right after the word "agreement." May I suggest we add the words in substantially the form attached? And the reason why we're adding that is in case there's some little tweaks that need to be done, because the conversation is still going on between the school district and the city, but it's not any of the major deal points, it's just small revisions that may need to be done, it's moving paragraphs from one section to another. Then, in order to facilitate that, I have another recommended change, and that's to add a third recommendation, which is to authorize your city manager to negotiate and approve these minor revisions, should they be required. Otherwise, and then number two, that's there, is just as it's worded.
Could you give an example of what these revisions would include?
Yeah, there's belief, right now, I talked to Carrie Raven, attorney in our office that helped Mr. Duffy with this agreement. She indicated that the school district thought it would be a good idea, and she agrees, to take the section about maintenance of the pool that's in the body of the agreement, and put it in the attachment that relates specifically to the pool, because the maintenance of the pool and the field are different, so that would kind of segregate out. Just minor little things, it would not change any of the terms.
So, the wording wouldn't change, but just where it shows in the document?
Exactly, this is my understanding.
Okay, any other questions on this item? Is there somebody that would like to make a motion?
Mayor, if I could? This excites me a lot, as does a lot of the things that are going on here tonight, but I know in the past, Grand Terrace was known as a city without too much to do, but it's starting to look like that's changing. It's just one thing after another after another, and I'd like to commend our city manager. He's constantly shaking the bushes and finding this money everywhere, from all these different funds and from developers, and the city is really on the move. And that having been said, I would like to make the motion, if nobody else has any comments.
You're making the motion as amended by our city attorney?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Reinars. Is there a second?
Should I read the motion?
Would you like to? Certainly, read the motion, please.
Understood, I would like to approve the license agreement in substantially the form attached with Colton Joint Unified School District for the city of Grand Terrace to utilize CJUSD facilities for youth soccer and swimming, and authorize the appropriation seventy-five thousand dollars in park impact fees, and fifty-one thousand dollars in redevelopment bond proceeds to fund this project, and three, to authorize the city manager to negotiate minor revisions to this agreement.
I second that, Alan.
Thank you, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Reinars, Hussain, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Okay, thank you very much. On to item number ten, which is award of contracts for on-call public works inspection and plan check services. May we have a staff report, please?
Evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers Allen French, Public Works Director. This item before you is in support of the 2030 goal of number one, ensuring fiscal responsibility, and goal number two, maintaining public safety. We are in the, constructing the first year of our capital improvement program, and the contract for construction has been awarded. This item helps me to be able to see that construction, inspect that construction, and make sure it's happening as the plans and specifications are dictating. As we spoke earlier about the Dog Park, that's coming into construction at this point. Again, I'm in the need of personnel in the field to inspect that as needed. This, awarding these contracts would help me to fulfill that field inspection part, as well as the plan-checking services as developments come in. We have some major developments on the horizon, and I'm going to need help with checking those plans and specifications. These contracts would allow me to review those and ensure that all the contract documents cover all the requirements for the city and the construction. So, we have went through a request for proposal process, and have selected the three top companies of HR Green, TKE Engineering, and Inner West Consulting Group. These are firms that are shown to have adequate staff and experience to perform the duties that we're requiring for this contract. So, I am now asking for the council to act on this recommendation of executing contracts for the public works inspection, and allowing us to utilize the services of these firms. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. French. Does council have any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Wilson?
This just might be a thing, I guess. I guess I'm going to ask this question to the city manager, and this is in general in relation to these kinds of things. Why do we hire well-qualified, experienced help and then turn over the plan check and inspection duties to consultants? This is a thing that I've always wondered about, or at least I've wondered about for at least the last twenty years, when it became a thing, where we started to go out to consultants. The only time I ever remembered it was when we went out to consultants, when we could justify it against the cost of a major project. And we're talking major projects, you know, like five hundred or seven hundred units in a residential project. You just, you know, kind of clip that money off onto that particular item. But, saying that, do we know what percentage of cost of this might go to the Dog Park, considering the fact that, you know, we were trying to economize? I don't see a ton of inspection here.
It wouldn't be a ton, and that is the advantage of the on-call, is we're not actually hiring a person on staff. These firms will be on-call as the work is needed. We would call them up, ask them to perform the duties on the limited basis that we needed. So, it really helps out in that respect, is they're just on-call.
So, from that standpoint, it's kind of like having an ion battery stationed in the background, just in case we get a brownout. Something like that, in other words.
Absolutely.
Let me ask, let me ask this question, and I'm not going to pretend to do anybody's job here, that's for sure. I don't want it. So, let me, how have these people who advertise that they are, you know, they seem to be the people that we want to go after, how have they controlled cost in the past? I see unit prices that go from seventy-five to two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars an hour for a principal and charge. How do they save us a bunch of money?
What they're, okay. What they're saying, that's their rate for that type of a person, but the actual person doing the work may be at a lower rate, and they would just be overseeing them if needed at all. A lot of the times, the person would report directly to me, being on staff, and I would give them direction, rather than utilizing their staff management.
So, you can give direction in relation to the city of Grand Terrace's goals?
Yes.
Okay, that's not a bad thing. All I'm concerned about is, is that if we open our checkbook at forty thousand dollars a whack, that seems to me that there's only one thing missing here, and maybe it's something that can be finalized. That is, there's no estimate, there's no estimate of application. So, for example, if I was to bid something, I would have to do similar to what happened to the landscape thing. You know, in the landscape thing, they had, you know, so many of these, and so many of these, and so many of these. Where I've found some deficit in the past is, is that you basically spend up the waistband, and then if the waistband needs to grow, it just gets grown, and not only that, but it keeps on going in the following year. That's what I'm saying. So, without any real description of work, other than we will charge you, how do we control?
Okay, yes, councilman, but I'd like to stress is that forty thousand is a maximum, not to exceed, and what we do is, as an assignment comes up, we ask for a quote for that assignment, and if that becomes, is a reasonable quote, then we would assign a consultant that task.
Yeah, I saw that. So, that's authorized under purchase order, that it's approved by you and the city manager, I think.
And our quote is a request, the beauty of this is that we have three, and so, based on the performance, we can choose the one that's either performed well, or performed with rates are lower. So, the forty thousand dollars is the combined, and it's also, another important point is, this is also paid for by project. So, it's not going to be general fund-driven, it's a project that we have-
So it's not gonna be general fund-driven, it's, it's a project that we have in place, that we need assistance on, we will call them up, they will, he'll get the three quotes that we need, and we'll move forward from there.
Yes, and I also saw that there were ten at one point, so, and then you rated it through a subcommittee, sort of, to, to put points on that, which is about the best way you can do with a consultant. So I applaud the effort, it was, it was a lot of work. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? I had a question about disparity of, of dollars per hour, but you answered it with the idea that you're gonna put it out to quote to all three of them, so that's, that's fine. All right, if there are no questions of staff, I will open it up to public comment. Seeing no takers, I will bring it back to council for consideration of a motion. Make a motion to award professional services agreement for on-call public works inspection and plan check services to H.R. Green, TKE Engineering, and Interwest Consulting.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Reinars, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNebo voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to item eleven, which is the 2017-18 Landscape and Lighting Assessment District. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Alan French, Public Works. Uh, for this item, I would like to turn it over to Adrian Freeman from the Public Works staff, who will present this item.
I'm sorry, it appears this isn't functioning. Thank you. Adrian Freeman, Management Analyst with the Public Works Department. This staff report supports goal number one, ensure our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for services. In your packet, uh, you have a order of procedures, uh, which we will follow for, uh, this report. Staff has included three separate recommendations, and asked that council motion two separate approvals, uh, for the recommendations, as follows. Uh, one approval for recommendation number one, ordering the engineer's report, and then one approval for recommendations two and three together, uh, which will approve the engineer's report, and declare the city council's intentions to provide for an annual levy and collection of assessments, uh, setting a public hearing for July eleventh, uh, 2017. You will find maps included in your packets, uh, showing the general boundaries, uh, of the district, and general work of improvements to be maintained. Just as a general overview, uh, we have our tracks that are, uh, separated into zones, and you'll see that in the report. Uh, we have zone one and two, uh, which were from the original assessment district. And then we have zone three, this is actually, this is zone three, uh, which was the annexation. Zone four is a new development from last year, uh, the Green Bar development off of Mount Vernon Avenue. And then zone five, uh, this is the development off of Pico Street, uh, Palomino Court. So, both zone, zone four and zone five, um, were annexed into the district last year. Each year, staff, uh, looks at the expenditures from the current fiscal year, uh, to determine the costs of maintaining the district for the next fiscal year. So at this report, uh, following our order of procedures, we would like to ask that council would, uh, approve or adopt resolution number one, ordering the engineer's report.
Any questions of staff at this time? Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item, before we consider a motion? Okay, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion to adopt a resolution.
Uh, Mayor, I guess we'll adopt the resolution number two thousand one seventeen, resolution of the city council ordering the preparation of plan specs and cost estimate diagram assessment report pursuant to provisions of Division fifteen, Part Two of the Streets and Highways Code of the State of California, for proceedings for the annual assessment levy after formation of a district, and then item two, adopt resolution number two thousand seventeen blank, a resolution of the city council approving the engineer's report for the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year two thousand seventeen to eighteen in a district within said city, and number three, adopt resolution number two thousand seventeen blank, a resolution of the city council declaring its intention to provide for an annual levy and collection of assessments for certain maintenance in an existing district pursuant to provisions of the decision fifteen, Part Two of the Streets and Highways Code of the State of California, setting a time and a place for the public hearing thereon.
I'm sorry, I think it was supposed to be the first resolution, and then we continue on with the other two. I'm sorry.
All right, so, so we're, so we're making one motion on, on the first one, and then we'll, can we save your motion for items two and three? All right, so we have a motion for item one, correct? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Reinars, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem, Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNebo voting yes.
All right. So we can vote on two and three together, correct, Mr. City Attorney? So, Councilmember Wilson, may I take the second half of your motion and make that a motion for items two and three?
Uh, please, Mayor.
All right. Is there a second on that?
Second, two and three.
Okay. There, there was an order of procedures included in your packet, so it goes with the first resolution, and then there's a brief discussion, and then the second and third resolution.
I have a motion and second on item two and three.
I'm sorry?
I said, I have a motion for approval.
Okay.
For adopting a motion, uh, there, these resolutions for item two and three. Would, would you like to say something before we vote?
That's fine.
All right, thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Reinars, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNebo voting yes.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you, Analyst Freeman, I appreciate your time and your report.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to item twelve, which is agreement for legal services with Jones and Mayer.
Yes, Mayor, um, once again, Chief Deputy City Manager, this is a request to approve the agreement of legal service with the Jones and Mayer, um, for fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen. The City of Grand Terrace retained Jones and Mayer in two thousand and eleven at a retainer amount of about eight thousand dollars per month. In two thousand and thirteen, the city reduced that to about five thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars due to economic, um, conditions. And the city also, uh, estimated that they would be having, um, using Jones and Mayer as about thirty-five hours, uh, during that timeframe as part of the retainer. However, on average, the city has used Jones and Mayer seventy to a hundred and twenty-eight hours, um, and, on the retainer, but only paying Jones and Mayer to, at the thirty-five hour rate. Um, so, uh, as a result, the council has directed, uh, myself to come, uh, and present the report to increase the number of hours of the retainer to fifty hours at a rate of eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per month as part of the retainer. The retainer will cover the, the first fifty hours of legal services per month at the reduced billing rate of a hundred and sixty-five dollars per hour. Any services billed in excess of fifty hours, uh, retainer will be billed at Jones and Mayer's rate of a hundred and ninety dollars per hour. This certainly will require the city manager and staff to control the amount of time they use for, on the retainer. However, the city manager will, will be authorizing special projects, um, for projects that can be billed at the hundred and ninety hour rate, uh, that will not impact the city's general fund. Uh, with that information, uh, Mayor, I am available for questions.
Thank you. Council have questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Wilson?
At any point somewhere in conversations, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I believe we were going to see if we could draw, draw up a log, try to determine, because I, I believe there were some conversations in relation to, uh, the various people that were administratively produced to be able to authorize attorney work. That's how we were, you know, that, that's, again, your forte, I don't want to jump into your forte, but, um, is there a policy thing that you've now kind of adopted? I think you hinted at it.
Yeah, we, um, not a formal policy, but staff, the executive team has been given direction, that they are the only ones to contact the, the city attorney, and if the staff wants, if the lower staff, uh, the line staff wants to contact the city attorney's office, they would get authorization from, uh, their department, from their department head. We will also be reviewing each, uh, monthly, uh, log, uh, to, to confirm the billing, uh, and also, um, when we have a project for, maybe it's a development project or a special project, we will be billing, uh, we'll be charging that special project the, the cost, uh, to, to make sure that we stay under our fifty-hour, um, limit.
I can understand the, you know, the diverting that in, in the right direction, and that makes sense, overall. I guess the reason why I'm asking, my basis for the question is, is that when I was involved in a, with a public company, we would distill the authority to be able to deal with the attorneys down to one individual, and it was usually the Harvard grad that was the, you know, VP or president of that particular region, so that there was no mistake, you know, you were spending very expensive money.
Well, in, in the partnership that we have with Jones and Mayer, one of the things that they'll be making sure of, that when a staff person calls, if it's not a department head, that there has been permission in order to, to seek that legal, legal advice.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this time? All right, I'll open this up for public comment, if there's somebody that'd like to comment on this item. Seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I would like to make the motion, Mayor, to approve the agreement for legal services with Jones and Mayer for fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Reinars, Hussey, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNebo voting yes.
Thank you. Item thirteen, continued deliberations for budget of fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen.
May I request that we take, and this is probably gonna be a, maybe forty-five minute session at the max, um, three minutes, if we may take a five-minute break?
Five minutes for a forty-five minute session? That's all you're gonna offer me?
No, 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 less than five minutes.
Well advised, we are in recess for five minutes.
If we may take a five-minute break?
Five minutes for a forty-five minute session?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a continuation deliberation of our two thousand seventeen eighteen budget. Um, we have a proposal presented to the councils for total city budget by fund, the overview of proposed budget requests, special revenue funds, and the use of the various funds. Supports the city's mission, vision, and core values, also increases the current level of service with focus on public safety and economic development. Our general fund does not use fund balance for two thousand seventeen eighteen operations. Also recognizes the strong economic recovery of the city, and strategically invests in the city's future. This is a chart that we have all come to understand, this is a chart that shows the health of the city's budget, uh, far left on the left-hand side, the bottom, uh, in red, unsustainable or insolvent. Unsustainable or insolvent means that your revenues are less than your expenses. A vulnerable budget means that your revenues exceed your expenditures, which is a good thing, but you don't have, you don't have that two-month reserve that's recommended by, by the Gatsby Government Accountants Standards Board. And then a sustainable budget is a budget that revenues exceed expenditures, and you do have that Gatsby-recommended two-month reserves. And then you have a healthy budget, which the revenues exceed expenditures, continues to grow, uh, to show growth year over year, and the city's in, uh, an outstanding financial condition. Uh, as you can see where we've been and where we are now, we're making headway to that healthy component, we're now at the midway point, I would say, in sustainability, uh, and hoping to, that we'll grow the economy to, uh, move forward. This was the, uh, the budget transmitter load that I presented, and it included the following items, uh, fund balance and revenue fund, that's, that's actually in the budget this year. Uh, it also included personal increases and operational changes, law enforcement services, execution of services in terms of our goal to really focus in on being more efficient in the delivery of those services. Also, uh, talked about the childcare program in terms of how this is the final year we're phasing out that program. Economic development partnerships, we talked about those. And we also referenced the bond proceeds, which we, uh, uh, have two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, uh, that we have received, a part of our five percent allowed because of the use of bond proceeds, and also the EIFDs, or the Enhanced Infrastructure Financial District, and our process that we're going through there. So, we're going to, over the next, um, couple sessions, talk about departments and their top ten priorities in which they're going to be doing. And so up first, we have the Public Works Department to share with the council what their priorities are, and to show their funding sources for those priorities. Mr. French?
Thank you, City Manager Duffy. Alan French, Public Works, um, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Councilman. First item for the Public Works Department for this next fiscal year. Okay. Um, here's our first slide, our first project. This is from our capital improvement program. This will be year two for our capital improvement program, which we'll be implementing, um, later this year, definitely within the fiscal year. Um, this is the second year of the five-year program to improve the condition of the existing city streets, uh, through overlay or full debt reconstruction, and reutilizing, uh, majority of the Measure I funds. There are some general funds that we need to expend for our portion to qualify to, uh, to receive the Measure I funds. The next program is our tree trimming program, which we're utilizing Measure I funds. This is a year two also, for pruning and trimming or removal of the trees in the road park, in the parkway of the roads within the city. The next project is a sidewalk project, which, uh, we, we had last year, and it was uprooted, but this year we need to continue that program. Um, we are utilizing Measure I and general fund as well. This is the second year of the, we're hoping within the five-year program, we're able to, um, address all the sidewalks, uh, but we'll repair or replace the sidewalk sections as needed. But we'll repair or replace the sidewalk sections as needed. The next one is the Mount Vernon Safety Improvement Program. This project was a grant application that we had applied for and was awarded last fiscal year. Hopefully, this next fiscal year, we're right now in the, are applying for the obligation part, portion of the grant. We're in progress of obligating the funds, and we hope to get that done early this year and start design in this fiscal year as well. The next project is the Commerce Way Extension. We'll start preliminary work on this this fiscal year, and it's the first major street expansion for the city. The plan is to connect Taylor Street at Main to the existing end of Commerce. We'll be utilizing some Measure, Measure I funds, and a portion of the DIF funds for Another project we had, which was started last fiscal year, was the replacement of the benches and the picnic tables at Veterans Freedom Park. We had applied and won a grant for a portion of that. This fiscal year, we plan on, we have the picnic tables and the benches. We need to assemble them and install them at the park. So that'll take place this 17-18 fiscal year, and the anticipation is using the general Next project is the street sign replacement. This is more along the lines of regular maintenance. We anticipate replacing either worn or damaged street signs throughout the city, and we're anticipating use of Measure I funds and some general fund for that as well. Next project is a streetlight replacement program. Edison has a program that allows you to replace the existing high-pressure sodium lighting with LED lights, and that's part of a grant program, and it's funded through Edison. The solid waste collection program utilizes the general fund, and it's for sponsoring to a bulky item collection day and a hazardous waste collection day that will be coming up this fiscal year, and will utilize the general fund. That concludes the projects for Public Works, and I'll turn it over to Sandra Molina.
I'm sure there's definitely no questions on your, on the projects.
Any questions on the Public Works portion at this time? I have a clarification. Bulky item collection, we are doing one household hazardous waste and one bulky item? Or two of each?
No, Madam Mayor, for the fiscal year, it would be one each.
One each, okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Sandra Molina. I'm the Planning and Development Services Director for the city. The Planning and Development Services Department is comprised of planning, building, and safety, and code enforcement, and also the department manages our planning commission. Our budget for the fiscal year coming up is approximately $740,000, and with regard to staffing, that would be the equivalent of six full-time positions. Our top 10 projects we envision in the next fiscal year includes our active transportation grant. The city did receive a $295,000 state-funded grant. The grant activities are underway at this last community day. Our consultant was present and conducting surveys and getting input from our community members. For the next 16, excuse me, 17-18 budget, we're only budgeting $280,000 because we expended some of that funding this current fiscal year. We have enforcement-related contracts that contributes to our expenditures. That's a combination of general fund and solid waste fees. Those services include animal control and sheltering services, about $150,000 from our general fund. Our weed abatement services, we contract with San Bernardino County Land Use Services, and that's approximately $35,000. Our street sweeping and parking enforcement services, that's $53,000. A part of that is offset through street sweeping, excuse me, through the refuse BRTAC collection. There's a small component in that, fees collected that go to street sweeping services. Another project is the 40-acre rezoning on the north end of the city, northwest end, north of Vivienda. The city council did authorize staff to enter into a contract and also approved the contract for a consultant to conduct the planning services, and we are anticipating a budget of $18,000 in the next fiscal year, and that's coming from our general fund. Our rental inspection program, which is managed through our code enforcement department, our funding for that for the fiscal year is $65,000. That comes from our general fund, but that program is offset through the collection of fees of the program. So every property owner that has a property in the program pays a fee based upon the type of residence that's being inspected. Also, we anticipate special code enforcement projects, and we estimate about $10,000 worth of expenditures with regard to staffing. As the council recalls this, in this fiscal year, during the spring, we had a spring cleaning program, and we got the word out to our residents that over a two-week period, our code enforcement officers would be doing special enforcement of inoperative vehicles. And we did, we did do that over two weeks. We probably cited, I think we cited about 40 vehicles, but leading up to that two weeks, our code enforcement was very active in letting our residents know that we have this program, and so if they came across an inoperative vehicle, they were informed of the program to give them an opportunity to remove it or make it operative. And so we felt that was successful. And so for this next fiscal year, we're gonna, we're gonna have another program, and again, we're focusing on quality of life issues. And so what, as we identify the program, we'll share that with the, with the planning, excuse me, with the city council. We also have some expenditures in staffing for the Volunteer Emergency Operations Committee. We did have a meeting with the committee back in April, and we talked about how we're moving forward. And what we discussed is that the Volunteer Emergency Operations Committee would transition into a certain program and focus on community-wide emergency preparation and education. We anticipate a general fund expenditure of about $13,000 for this program. We are also working on the Grand Terrace Specific Plan and Related Entitlements. The council did enter into a development and disposition agreement and also approved a memorandum of understanding with Lewis Land Developers. They are processing a specific plan, or they will be submitting soon a specific plan for approximately 80 to 100 acres in the city. Associated with that will be a general plan and zoning amendments, a development agreement, and also development entitlements. We estimate staff time at approximately $250,000. Our fees are such that the, our deposit base and the developer pays for the cost of staff time, and so you'll see that that funding source is developer fees up on that slide. The specific plan and the related applications do require an environmental impact report. We estimate approximately $175,000. Again, that is, that cost is offset by developer fees. And in conjunction with the Midas program, there are a number of projects, commercial projects, along Barton Road that we anticipate in the next fiscal year. We have development on the north side of Barton Road near the Happy Care, Urgent Care. We also see in the Town Square Commercial Center, that was a 20-acre master plan. We anticipate development happening on the east end of that master plan area. Also Barton Plaza, which is where the Walgreens is at. There are some pads there in that location that we recently talked to the property owner, and he's interested in completing those pads. We also have the southwest corner of Barton Road in Preston, where we're looking at a 5,000-square-foot commercial building. And then also just, just to the east of us here, the Surgical Center that is in plan check. And so we anticipate an expenditure of about $90,000 to process or complete these applications. Again, again, it's a developer fee-based offset. And then we have a couple residential projects. It's the completion of the Van Buren project. It's about 17, a small lot subdivision that was approved. Also, we anticipate the Housing Authority has a small property along Canal. We also anticipate some movement on that, and so that expenditure, again, developer fees, it's approximately $55,000. With that, I believe that's my last priority project, and I'll hand it off to the city clerk, unless the city council has any questions for me.
Thank you. Does council have any questions of staff at this time?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Debra Thomas, and I'm with the city clerk's office. City clerk's office is responsible for maintaining the official records on behalf of the city, as well as agenda management preparation, making sure that the council chambers are set up to ensure that the council can run their meetings smoothly. One of the top projects for the city clerk's office is records management. The source of funding would be coming from a fixed asset funds, and the description of this is document management and electronic filing system for improved transparency, efficient turnaround on public records requests. With the document management software system, to store the records electronically would help ease search and retrieval of documents, and it would keep a majority of those documents in a central repository. It automatically indexes critical data and does improve search capabilities. It would allow all staff members to be able to access a lot of those records on a timely basis, therefore it would help save and help them be more efficient maybe in preparing their projects. The next top project that we've discussed is an agenda processing upgrade. We currently have the agenda management system through a company, a seller that we use right now, MinuteTrack. However, we want to include a digital boardroom with electronic voting with live streaming of the vote results. It would allow the members of the public who do view the meetings in their home comforts of their own homes to be able to see on the screen what the voting results are. I think it would help them feel a little more, give some real-time voting results, as well as meeting content on chamber room display screens and displaying the content to that online audience. It'll help easily navigate the agenda, as well as enlarge your attachments. I know sometimes that we have issues with the size of the attachments, and with a simple touch of a screen, it could help assist you with that. I will turn it over to the finance department, unless you have some questions for me.
Any questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, city council. Because it's the city manager's intent, but we don't stay all night, he saves the best for last. So for tonight, I do have the last slide as we present the budget. So for the finance department, as city manager had presented and got approval several months ago, we've got two positions that used, were contracted to the Willan in-house. That was the budget officer and the part-time principal accountant. So to continue with that, to bring the rest of the remaining positions in, that would be the addition of two management analyst positions at a cost of about $153,000, the salaries and benefits, and the termination of the Willan contract at an estimate of about $160,000. So we'd be saving $7,000 for this transition. So that is the finances, finance department's proposal in this budget. And the city council have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Mayor.
Has to do with childcare center. There was an overhead allocation that was made to the childcare center. Where does that fall now in our budget?
Where did it fall?
Yeah. I'm sure there's an impact now that we don't have that department for the overhead allocation.
Yeah.
So how do we, how do we manage that with this year's budget?
Yeah. So the original overhead cost allocation, two years ago, from the childcare fund was $200,000. When we redid the costing for this current year, that went down to $160,000. So now that we are losing the childcare services, providing services, I redid the budget to make that zero. So what we have in exchange was actually the lease that we will be, the lease amounts that we will be getting from FSA, which is $120,000. So the net difference of $30,000 is what we would have had to either absorb or reduce the budget. So when we, when we redid the proposed budget for the general fund, we had to reduce some of our expenditures by that amount. But that is, that is, I'm sorry, sir.
No, I was, I was.
That is the net difference.
Okay, and so if FSA comes back and they purchase the building, so we don't have the rent that we will receive from that building or the lease payment, then that requires us to go back and do some more looking for additional money to reduce in our budget, correct?
Yes, me, not necessarily. I'm an optimist. I agree with council member Reyners's comments. If we're gonna be getting new businesses and our values are gonna go up, you are gonna see increased property values, increased sales tax, increased business license, and city manager's very active and always looking for future revenue sources. But yes, that is something that we are bearing in mind, and we are aware of that.
Could Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, also, one of the things that we're doing these years, we have to go back and look at what the benefits are to us financially for our reduction in costs for other services. We should be seeing some reduction in insurances. One of the big components was the having childcare, that was a really significant item on our insurance level. So we'll be looking at all of those things, and obviously, with more than half of the employees, or two-thirds of the employees that we have, were childcare no longer being here, we'll look at our base. And our base is that we don't have to have the same base that we had before. So we'll be going through that this year.
And if I understand correctly, our insurance pool looks at our payroll to determine our portion that we pay them.
That is correct. And normally, JPIA submits that invoice at the beginning of May, which we have already received. So we have called them and told them that our base personnel is reducing in half, so they are going to, they've thought about it, and they're requesting something in writing from the city manager. We will prepare, and then they're going to reduce that rate for next year.
Thank you.
So with that, if council has no more questions, we just have a request. Staff is recommending?
Do you have any questions for staff at this time? Mr. City Manager, you have a statement to make?
Yes, well, Mayor, excuse me. What Miss Fortune was going to ask you was the potential to do a special meeting on June 20th. So we want to let the council know that we, at that special meeting on June the 20th, what we're doing will be the same presentation, it will be the city manager's office and also the sheriff's department. If the council so desires, we could actually do that on the 27th, but what we wanted to do was to allow enough time for you to have that conversation with the. the, with the sheriff's department's budget. We'll also be sharing with you the results of our survey that we did for the, the budget of the park and also our instant results survey that we did here, stakeholders meeting that we had, like I said, two stakeholders meeting. So, so we'll be sharing that with the council at the twentieth meeting for a special meeting or we can move that to the twenty-seventh, to our standard meeting. It's, it's one of the, the council, they have that option.
Okay. Council, what would you like to do? Would you like to meet again on the twentieth or shall we push it to the twenty-seventh at a regular meeting?
Can we get it done on the twenty-seventh?
Mr. City Attorney?
I think everything's going pretty good.
Yes.
Did you hear Mr. Hesse's question?
No, I didn't. I'm sorry. Because I have something to contribute on this topic, but what is your question?
If we can get it done on the twenty-seventh, no problems. The budget, instead of having a special meeting on the twentieth, I mean.
The meeting on the twentieth is just to go over what our top ten priorities are for the city manager's office and also the sheriff's.
I understand. Would it be any problem to have it on the twenty-seventh, the same thing, we go over that? I mean, I don't.
No, because.
Means I have no questions. I've been coming here to the surveys and things like that, you know. I'm fine with the twenty-seventh. I'm just wondering the other council if we're good or, or if you want to do the.
Mayor Portem?
Yeah, I don't see why we can't get this done on the twenty-seventh or so.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, there's another item that I want to point out to you that just came to our attention. And, and it might help with this decision. The closed session item that is listed in your agenda has a typographical in it and it says conference with real property negotiators instead of conference with labor negotiators. All the other information in that listing is correct, the government code section and everything else, but there is that problem. Now, one potential solution to that would be to adjourn this meeting to the, the twentieth also and have the city clerk do a notice of adjournment tomorrow. We amend the agenda and repost it and it would, for all intents and purposes, be a regular meeting and you would only take up the one item at the twentieth if you choose to have a meeting on the twentieth. So anyway, the other thing would be to say that, that this listing is in substantial compliance with the requirement and, and go ahead and have it tonight. My only concern is, is if the government code section was incorrect, I would be comfortable with that, but the, the words that the public would understand are the ones that are not correct. Otherwise, these things were supposed to be done at regular meetings. That's why I came up with the adjourned regular meeting concept.
Okay, so we'll go back to council member Hesse since you are, are stating that you would like to have our discussions on the twenty-seventh. And, and so now with, with this, that the city manager or the city attorney has brought up, what are your, what are your thoughts?
I thought we had an amendment. Didn't you guys pass one down? I've been, it was sent to us on an email. I don't know if it's for this.
That was the inclusion of the contract for the school district.
I, I'm, I understand if we have issues, but I'm still good for the twenty-seventh.
We're talking about the?
Personally, yes.
Okay. And then in the matter of the closed session, would you opt for coming back or adjourning to the twentieth for that special labor negotiation or are you comfortable moving forward tonight?
Do everything in one day.
Well, we would either, we would either say that we're going to do that tonight, the closed session. We make provisions for that. Is that my understanding, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, it would be a short period of time, whatever the, if it's tonight or if it's on the twentieth.
But we can, we can continue to have that closed session tonight.
If you want to say that this is in substantial compliance with the Brown Act.
Okay.
And you're not concerned that it misled the public or anything.
All right, so do you believe we're in substantial compliance on this item?
I would like that. I would just, we get it done.
All right. All right, Mayor Portem, same question to you. Your, your preference is to have our budget discussion on the twenty-seventh. Do you believe we're in substantial compliance with our closed session?
I'm a little concerned because when I first glanced at it, I need mention that I didn't see it on the agenda. So I'm concerned that maybe we're not. I would not mind going for a, was it seventy, seventy-two hour posting, what's the posting requirements and have it just a closed session in the interim?
On the twentieth?
Or on the interim before. I'd like to be able to see what kinds of impacts we have from, from, from that discussion too, that might impact the, the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so, so you would say you would be willing to move the closed session only to the twentieth? Would that, would that be workable?
Well, can we do it this week? I mean.
I cannot do it this week.
Okay. I'd be fine then.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson, what are your preferences to the twentieth or the twenty-seventh for budget negotiations and the question of substantial compliance?
I am with Councilman Hesse.
All right. You're believing we're in substantial compliance and we can have our closed session tonight and that we move the remaining budget discussion to the twenty-seventh?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Ryan Ursus.
I, I agree as well.
That we will have closed session tonight, we are in substantial compliance and that we will move our budget discussion to the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Okay. Can you live with that? Mayor Portem? All right, then I believe that, would you like a vote that we find we're in substantial compliance on the closed session item?
Yeah, that could come just before your recess to go in closed session.
Okay. And so we, my understanding from my colleagues is that we will have the remainder of our budget discussion on the twenty-seventh and that we will move forward with the remainder of the agenda tonight. So that ends item thirteen. And we will move to city manager communications.
Mayor, I just have just a few comments. I have a slide just to alert the council to, fifth of July is, is coming quickly and once again, we'll be putting a poster out regarding it's illegal to light fireworks early on the fifth of July from twelve PM to eleven PM in the no-firework safety zone. It's also illegal. One of the things that we also are gonna be able to do this year is the sheriff's department will be providing extra patrol coverage on Friday, six-thirty, seventeen through Tuesday, seven-four, two thousand and seventeen. And it's even that the fire department will also be active in doing enforcement during that, during that. So they will actually be citing this year at no cost to us and they're, they recovered their costs obviously through the fees that they levy when they, they do the fines. So we'll have our police, our sheriff's department out and in the normal increased duty and also the fire department will also be out to cite those individuals that are lighting fireworks in the illegal fireworks and also people who are lighting fireworks in the no-firework zone.
Okay.
And just very quickly to you, I just wanted to talk about my time in Sacramento recently as a Mayor Portem reference. Once again, the legal California cities is trying to address the issue of pensions regarding CalPERS. So much was said about PEPRA and how that was going to resolve the, the CalPERS liability issues. However, they've recognized that the PEPRA is for all new employees hired after two thousand and thirteen will address, will come into impact, really have an impact on the retirement system in about twenty-five years. So now they're dealing with the issue of, well, we have still a number of classic employees that are basically by right now, the, the state can't modify those programs. But there's some, some new legislation or some new court cases which they, which they believe that may modify that in the near future. One of the important things, I think it's important that I referenced in my committee was that there are three parties to the agreement. There's the employee, there's the employer, and there's CalPERS. And so the way the CalPERS system works is they had something called super funded, but back in the nineties where they said that we're making so much money on these investments that you can actually move your employees from two percent to two-point-five to three percent and it won't cost you anything because we're making eighteen percent on, on these returns. Well, when the economy took a tank, so did the investments for CalPERS. And so what's interesting thing is, is you learn this, is so CalPERS says, well, you know, the retirement returns are based upon our investments and what our returns are. And so when we misjudge or lose money on the investments, we're gonna go back to the city and make them make up that. So now we have this thing called unfunded liability. And unfunded liability really means that, well, CalPERS thought that we're gonna be here, but they're actually here in their gain and in the middle here is what the cities have to make up. And so what I was telling the committee is that, well, but there's two parties to that agreement. Right now, so as a CalPERS retiree, or potential retiree or a member, I, I have a system in place where if CalPERS loses on their investments, they don't come back to me and ask me for anything. They rely on the city. And so my, my comment was there are two parties to that agreement, me, the employee, and the city. So if the city has a three-hundred-thousand-dollar unfunded liability because of CalPERS' lack of investments, then the city has to pay them. And as the employee, I pay my six percent, the city pays their six percent. But when the loss occurs, the city takes, takes all the loss and the employees left out. So my, my point being, and it's a, it's a negative impact to me as an individual, but as a system, I would much rather have a system in place where if I'm a retiree and I'm paying six percent, if the economy didn't work out well, the city had to pay more, I wouldn't mind moving my mark there to say, to, to cover that because ultimately in the end, I want a solvent system. What the significant problem they're having now is they are anticipating within the next five to ten years that there will be more retirees than there are members contributing to the retirement system. And so they've gotta find a way to fix this. They fix this for the new employees coming in, but they have the classic employees who have retired and some have retained a significant amount of their, of their retirement. And so the goal is to try and adjust that. And I, I just, from a professional standpoint, I believe that the unfunded liability is a responsibility of the city but also to the, the employee. And right now, the city bears the entire cost. And the city did the super funded because of CalPERS saying that this is gonna work, there's no problem at all, you can act, you can actually do this. And now the city's left holding the bag and a lot of cities are gonna be facing some serious consequences if we don't try and resolve this unfunded liability issue. So those are my comments at the meeting and it was a pretty good meeting.
The cities were led down the path by CalPERS and they just threw up their hands and said, oops, did they drink the water?
Well, and the funny thing about it is that the only party at risk is the city because CalPERS has an umbrella that if we lose, we'll just go back and charge you more.
Pretty good deal. Pretty good deal. All right, well, thank you, Mr. City Manager. We will move to our closed session item and so, Mr. City Attorney, how would you like me to handle this?
Probably just to have a motion that the council finds that the closed session listing isn't substantial compliance with the Brown Act.
Okay.
That you're gonna recess into closed session.
All right, so I will mention at this time that the closed session is in compliance, substantial compliance with the Brown Act. It's a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six. If the council would please vote on that.
Motion passes unanimously with council members Ryan Ursus, Hesse, Wilson, voting yes. Mayor Portem, Maradona, voting yes. I'm Mayor McNabb, voting yes.
All right, thank you. So at this time, we will recess to closed session for our conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six. City designated representatives Richard L. Adams II, city attorney, and unrepresented employee, city manager. Those of you that will be leaving while we are in closed session, thank you for being here tonight. And I will let you know that we will have our next regular city council meeting to be held on Tuesday, June twenty-seven, two thousand and seventeen at six PM. Agenda item request must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than fourteen calendar days preceding the meeting and that we will be adjourning in honor of, in memory of Jack Morinberg, Detective Colton Peedy, and Grand Terrace residents. Thank you for being here tonight. We are in recess. For days preceding the meeting and that we will be adjourning in honor of, in memory We will reconvene to open session. The council met and closed session, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six. We gave direction to the labor negotiator, Richard L. Adams II, city attorney. So at this time, we will adjourn our city council meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, June twenty-seventh at two thousand and seventeen at six PM. Agenda item request must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than fourteen calendar days preceding the meeting. And of course, as I mentioned before, we are adjourning the meeting in memory of Detective Jack Morinberg. I'd like to thank my colleagues for their time and, and discussion. Thank you for the staff, to the staff for your work on this budget and the continued work on this budget and we are adjourned. Good night.